This is the Board of Trustees of the Franklin Township Public Library. It is Wednesday, February 27th, and I will call the meeting to order. And we will start with a pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Taking the role NBC, Tom Lennon, Agnes Kula Bagna, Iris Kislin.
Here.
Ed Ward.
Here.
And our newest member, Kevin McNeil.
Here.
Okay, Mayor Kramer.
Yeah.
And also January Adams, our director is here. And I'm here, Nicholas Champa. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law. The schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are also available at the reference desk. At this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our director, January Adams, who is also our parliamentarian for election of officers.
Okay. These are officers that'll serve for one year. Are there any nominations for the position of president? Iris?
I nominate Nick Champa.
Are there any seconds?
I second.
Are there any other nominations for the position of president? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Every year.
Thank you very much, Iris, and both of you both.
You're doing a great job.
So I guess you can continue with your nominations, because you're back.
Are there any nominations for the office of Secretary/Treasurer?
No. Vice President/Treasurer.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Entertaining nominations for the office of Vice President and Treasurer. It's one person.
Who was it last?
Currently.
I think it was John.
It's, yeah, John Clyde has passed away, and he was the last person to hold that position. I would like to nominate Tom Lennon to the position of Vice President/Treasurer.
An abstention. That'll teach him.
Yes. Play rough here.
Are there any other nominations for this office? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And Tom Lennon, wherever you are, congratulations. The other office is the office of Secretary. Are there any nominations for the office of Secretary?
I would nominate Iris, but I can't nominate because I don't have a vote.
Did you just nominate? Were you going to do it?
What were you going to do?
I was going to nominate Iris Kislin for Secretary. She has served well for a while, good while.
I'm tedious.
Are there any other nominations for the office of Secretary? I'm going to ask those in favor of electing Iris Kislin for Secretary, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Iris, congratulations. Is there any? Yeah, yeah. Is there any public comment at this time? Seeing none, we will pass over the public comment portion and go on to the minutes of the prior meeting. I think we've all gotten them in our packet. Hopefully, we've all read them. Is there any comment on the minutes? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Iris, you're making the motion.
She's making the motion.
I second.
You'll second, okay. The motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'd like to call a vote. Those in favor of passing this motion to accept the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, minutes have passed. Moving on to directors' reports. Again, we've had time to go over these in our packet. Any discussion of the financials, or first of all, the financials?
I'd just like to point out to our newest member that the library's financial year is fiscal and runs from July 1st to June 30th.
If there's no, give another minute or so. Anyone has any points of discussion on the finances, let me know. Otherwise, we'll go on to the other directors' reports. Operations report.
Okay. We had 1,555 people at 113 programs. And I don't know if you've noticed, but our program list, that appears on the second page, is growing and growing. That's because we have two new libraries that are very energetic, creating lots of new programs.
January, I did want to say, it's most impressive with the program during the day and the program in the evening, and the teen program and the children's program. It really is very impressive.
I'm going to pass that on to the staff.
And I get emails from Burnsville Library, and of course, I have gone to many programs there. And it's just great. It really is. And there's something I want to sign up for. Who do I call, like, one of the programs, March 27th?
Do you want to do it online, or do you want to do it over the phone? You can do it online. Which program do you want? I'll sign you up.
Cheer, Zumba, and Yoga. It's all in one, one class. It just says that one day. I don't know if it continues after that.
Is it on the list?
Yeah. Well, it's March 27th, I think.
You must have gotten it off the calendar.
I got it off the calendar.
Yeah, okay. So, Cheer, was it Cheer Yoga?
Cheer Yoga? No, it was Cheer Zumba and, oh, here, March 27th, I'm right. Cheer Zumba and Cheer Pilates, 2:00 PM on the 27th.
Okay. Okay, I'll sign you up and let you know. Our winter reading programs are going on. So far, we've got 35 adults, and they've read 101 books. And we've got 63 people in the children's, and they've read 20,000 minutes. Count it by minutes.
And we'll take all the minutes we can.
That's the way they do it. And that was it. That's it.
Well, I'd like to point out, kudos to your team for really connecting with Franklin High School Libraries, I mean Franklin High School staff and students.
Oh, yes?
Yeah. Because you had a couple of events here, 19th and 29th. So, kudos to you all. Because I like that connection with the library, public library, and the high school as well. The high school's book club, reading, et cetera. So, kudos.
Thank you.
Keep up the work.
Is there anything else you'd like to add on your operations report?
No.
So, I'm wondering why the interlibrary loans supplied to other libraries decrease. I mean, I guess we don't have much control of that. That's what libraries request. I just wonder if you have any insight on that.
It depends on, we don't have any control over that. That's other libraries asking for items that we have.
Because you know that they're getting better stocked, or is it?
They may be going to other libraries, maybe able to fulfill their requests first. Generally, what they do is, with the interlibrary loans, is they go to the smaller, it sounds contradictory, they go to smaller libraries first. And then, if the smaller libraries can't fill it, then they come out to the larger libraries, and we're one of the larger libraries. So, that may be part of it. The rest, I don't know.
Okay, thank you, January.
I thought your amnesty program was very interesting.
Oh, thank you.
I have a president's report, and I think I passed it out to most of you. Oh, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Give that to Ann.
There's a sad note to start with. John Clyde, our fellow trustee, passed away on January 24th. He was 63 years old. And he had spent a lifetime in public service, including service to the township of Franklin. He was mayor, and for nearly 20 years, a councilman. For the past two years, he helped us on this board, providing wisdom and guidance. John met health and other of life's challenges with dignity and perseverance. His death is a loss to us all. Next item I want to talk about could either be right here or in old business, but I'll read this anyway. Mayor Kramer, Agnes Kula Bagna, January Adams, and I met with the Board of Education Superintendent, Dr. John Rivali, and three Board of Ed members to discuss the use of Board of Ed-owned property for a library branch. Property near Claremont School was ruled out, and a parcel near Franklin Park School on Beller Street near Eden Street was discussed. The Board of Ed members present did not object to looking into the possibility of locating a 5,000-square-foot library with parking near the west side of the school parking lot. Dr. Rivali suggested that we investigate whether the property can support the use, and then, if we want to proceed, he will present the proposal to the full Board of Education for their consideration. I consider this good news.
Would you reiterate where the Franklin Park School is?
It's off Claremont Road. Yes, I shall.
Is it down 27th?
Yeah, it's off of 27th. Claremont Road, 27th and Claremont, and then you make a right on Eden.
Is it closer to Franklin Boulevard?
No. No, no, it's nowhere in that.
So, it's down this way?
It would be a replacement for Franklin Park.
It's right down the.
Kind of near the IHOP.
Yeah, the Tasty Cell.
The Tasty Cell.
Of course, I know it, because I go there on Claremont all the time.
Oh, sure.
Okay. So, I think that's good news.
So, we're looking at here, where the trees are?
Yes.
Okay. This is the parking lot.
Very near the parking lot.
So, what's the timeframe as far as?
27 would be about here.
We have, we'll take up this again in old business. Timeframe is, we're not sure what the timeframe is, but we would like to, we'll talk about this in old business. Is there any correspondence or communication?
This month, I gave you three articles.
Yes.
Two of which are sort of contradict each other, because the first one says, "Books are still libraries' bread and butter." And then, the second one, "More service than circ," says that circulation is decreasing, but libraries are offering more programming. And then, the third article, "Takeaways," is about publishing and about the books that are popular right now, politics, me too. And that just gives you a little taste of what's going on in the publishing world and the library world.
Yeah, of interest, my, you know, my wife is a devoted Kindle reader, but she still comes here to the library at least once a month and takes out a book.
It's a mix right now. We've got books, and then we've got the digital.
I was speaking to someone and telling him about this new venture for me, and he made a joke, but, you know, I don't know how I felt about it. You know, I said, you know, I'm going to the meeting of the Board of Trustees for the library. And he says, "Do people still go there?" This was a young guy.
Unfortunately, we hear that a lot.
And it was such a big part of my youth, I mean, and even my children, you know. My daughters are 30 and 24. So, in New York, I mean, they spent, I mean, when you had something to do, for school or to look up, you know, or to do any kind of research, you came to the library. They used to take us on trips to teach us how to use the catalog card when we was young. So, so much of our history, even in New York, you know, my daughter and a group of friends would go after school to the library. And it was almost, almost a shame to say, we almost used it as like a free, you know, like, after-school program. You know, we got five, and we knew that this was a safe place, you know, for them to come. We told them how to, you know, they knew how to act in the library. So, it was disheartening for me to.
Well, like I said, we hear that, but we don't see that.
Library is probably our most popular attraction, for lack of a better word, that the township offers. Even that's quite not accurate, it's not quite the township, but you know what I mean. It's one of the best things we have, or the most popular things we have. So, there's plenty of people who benefit from it.
And even the role of library slash media center, I say media center, especially in the school districts, is that that becomes the hub of schools, just like this library is the hub of the township. When you have programs, when you have circulation, you have resources for people to come in and use, take advantage of. Same thing in the school, school district. With the evolution of technology, yeah, you're going to have digital print. You're going to have Kindles, you name it. So, you may have less people checking out physical books, and there's still going to be people that love the hard copy book. But you also are going to have individuals coming in to do research and assistive research. And that's what we're being taught in the schools, is how to do proper research, you know, how to write a research paper, because you're always going to need skills. So, the role of library, and we call school library and media specialists, because they're all changed with technology. And then, you have Barnes and Nobles. You have the bookstores, where people just come and they read and hang out. And that's what you want your library slash media center to do, that hub program, somewhere kids can just, during lunchtime or weekends, have someplace to tinker, make a space, et cetera, all those trends that connect to our library.
I met a young lady yesterday who lives in South Brunswick, somewhere near our branch, and she said, "Yes, I go to the branch. I go to your branch. It's a very nice library." She said, "And of course, we have reciprocity with South Brunswick." Now, what's unusual about this? Not that someone from South Brunswick goes to our library, but this young lady works for a library, the Mary Jacobs Library down that road. So, she works for a library and yet uses our library occasionally.
And this says a lot about our library.
But I think, going back to what you said, when you start out as children. My daughter, who's much older than 30, was in from California and is, went to the 42nd Street Library to do research for a project that she's, a new project that she's working on. And, you know, came back and said, "Mom, that 42nd Street Library is the best. I always find what I'm looking for." You know, you don't lose that.
That's right.
You know.
That's right.
And it's, I thought it's.
That's a good one.
That is a good.
Okay, is there anything else on the correspondence, January? Thank you, Will, for those comments. And let's move on to old business. I already said a little bit about the meeting with the Board of Education people. And Agnes was there. She's not here tonight. January was there, and Mayor Kramer was there. Would either of you like to say anything about what you took away from that meeting?
Well, what I took away was that we talked about two sites, one by Claremont, one by Franklin Park. I thought they were very receptive to us in general. It was a very friendly meeting. They discouraged us from the Claremont location, for some reasons, that I don't want to say right now, and thought that the Franklin Park would be a better location. And we all kind of agreed. And we left the meeting with, let's see, that Bob Wormlocker was going to tell us what the next step should be, which I then took. I contacted Van Cleef and asked them for a site visit to see about the wetlands situation. And I do have his answer here. Am I jumping around?
No, that's exactly what we want to hear.
I thought we might, so, Kevin, we have, of course, this main library branch. And currently, we rent space on Route 27, Route 27 and Middle Bush for another branch. And we pay a lot of rent, and we even pay taxes there. In fact, we pay taxes to ourselves there. And the board has decided that it would be better to have a permanent structure, one that we own, and that will save money, some in the short run and definitely in the long run. And then, we are also considering a northern branch now, or more than considering one, because the youth center that the township is building is going to have a space for a library. So, this is discussion on where we, and we had a piece of property, we pursued it, and over the course of a year, eventually, the owner withdrew. And now, we're looking at this property. So, go ahead.
So, I just passed out the response from Van Cleef, which I think could be clearer. Maybe that's me.
Can we need one more?
You need another one?
Thank you.
But it sounded, from what I got out of this, that the wetlands was not an issue, and that we could fit a 5,000-square-foot building and parking on that lot if the Board of Education were to work out an arrangement with us.
I think the thing to do now, I had gotten this same map from our own engineering department that shows the possibility of some wetlands in the area that we're talking about. But it seems that we still need a letter of interpretation from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, the department that deals with freshwater wetlands. So, I believe we should proceed and get that. Meanwhile.
Did that come from Van Cleef?
Well, it could go through Van Cleef. It's possible that we can go directly to the Department of Environmental Protection and save a fairly hefty fee.
When you said you had the maps before, when there are wetlands, there are, you need the maps, in North Brunswick, it was engineering maps, to see if there's tributaries that feed into that wetlands. Can we get ahold of those?
Not that I know, I'm not conversant, I have no knowledge of those maps. But the Department of Environmental Protection Department, the group that deals with freshwater wetlands, would know about all of that. And I think that we should.
I don't know what the difference is. Is there a difference between freshwater wetlands and if you're on a stream?
Freshwater wetlands is noncoastal. Not along the beach, not along the ocean. So, any?
Any other, okay.
That's my understanding, that each type of wetlands is handled by a different department.
So, what's the timeframe in finding out what we need to find out?
We have to find, we have to inquire first to the Department of Environmental Protection. This usually takes a couple of months to get an opinion. I'm going to have to find out, either January or I will have to contact the department and find out what to do next. If we can do it ourselves without going through Van Cleef, and we feel that that would be just as good, well, we'll probably take that route. Meanwhile, I think we should tell Dr. Rivali where we stand with this, so he doesn't think we're just sitting on it. We are interested. And I would like to ask January to contact Dr. Rivali and tell him that we've taken the first step and are prepared to take the second step.
And then, what with the monetary?
That's not, no, yeah.
Not on the trade board.
Not there yet.
We can discuss that in executive session.
Is there any other old business?
Did you want to talk about CD?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Do we want to do that in executive session?
You want to bring up another issue on your old business?
It's actually old business.
Yes.
The board was interested in moving some money into a short-term, high-paying CD, and that sort of got stalled, because what Nick originally told us about was a promotional offer, and that offer was over with. So, Nick has pointed out that we could buy a Treasury bill from a no-fee account. You could do it that way. Or Iris did some investigation on high-paying CDs.
And I think the point of this whole thing is, these are promotional offers. And if we decide on it, you have to work on it. So, this is a Wells Fargo offer, and it's a limited, limited offer, 11-month CD at 2.6%.
Is that APY or AP, or interest rate?
The interest rate is 2.6%.
Okay. So, the yield would be slightly different, but, okay, in that order.
I didn't ask. So, the Treasury rate is 2.6%.
For one year.
He told me 10 years.
Well.
You have your one-year T-bills now paying 2.53.
2.53 for the one year.
Yeah, he told me 10 years is 2.6%.
Okay. Okay, well, we're not interested in 10 years.
No, so, so, but I think that we, either we decide on it or we don't, because then by the, the next meeting, this offer could, could go. And, and I think whether we do 11 months or, or 12 months, doesn't matter. You know, the, the rate will probably go up once within that 11 or 12-month period. Who knows, but indications are it might be. Where is it now and how much is it getting now?
Now, it's in a regular, I, it's, I, I, I didn't know you were going to ask. I can't tell you what it's getting now. It's not, it's certainly not that.
Well, I think we have to be prudent.
It's a Unity. It's in a, it's a Unity.
Do we have to be prudent?
So, it's just in a...
It's in a regular...
So, it's like getting a half a percent.
Yeah, two, three, do.
No, it's more than that.
Approximately 1%, it's only 1%.
Oh, whoopee.
Yeah, because it's pulling, it's pulling in like $4,000 a month.
So, that means it'll double in 72 years.
I wish I was 72 years old.
Okay. Is there a motion to move some money to a, is it 11-month CD at a local bank that I won't name? It's Wells Fargo Bank. Is there a motion to move some money?
Is it moved?
Second.
And will you read your motion or will you state your motion?
Yeah, how much?
A dollar or $2?
A lot of zeros after that.
Okay.
Can we say it in the public?
Yes, sure.
A million dollars.
It's, it's their money.
Yeah, their money.
Okay, the motion has been made to move $1 million from a Unity account to a Wells Fargo 11-month CD which pays 2.6% interest. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? No. Okay, this, this motion has passed unanimously. And the board instructs
I'll take care of it.
you to...
January, I'll get you the information tomorrow.
You're going to get it for me?
Okay.
Where is, where is the bank?
Well, the person I spoke for is a higher-up. And so, he said to call him, tell him when, and he will...
Okay, so you're giving the information. Okay.
Is there any other old business? Seeing none.
The local branch, excuse me, the local branch is, there's one on 27, there's one on, off Elizabeth Avenue.
Okay, I'll find it.
Is there any new business? Seeing no new business. Does anyone have reason that we should go into executive session and if so, for what?
I do concerning the southern branch and dealing with the Board of Ed.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of land discussions?
Do we have to say another reason if there's another reason to go in executive session?
There's only two other reasons.
Are we?
There's only two other reasons, personnel and...
Right, but do you have another subject?
Another subject. About moving other money. Oh, that's not to be, that should be discussed now?
You want to what, put money into savings of some kind or?
I would just like to know what other money is at such minimum amounts and for how long and...
That would be discussed in public.
Okay, so...
So, why don't I bring that to the next meeting?
Okay.
Okay. So, there is a motion, I believe, on the floor to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now in executive session.
We didn't say what we...
So, she's our one member of the public who comes to the...
She really, she's...
I've actually said, "Do you want to be on the board?" Still, still trying it out.
I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So, moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are out of executive session and into our second public comment period.
No comment.
Seeing no public comment. We will confirm that our next meeting will be on March 27th. And now I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Anyone?
A second.
Okay. Made in second. Are those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned and it is 6:16. Good, good timing. Okay, let's...
You like it? Yeah.
January, that's our, that's our secret now.
That is our...